Podcast, I am Aaron Schweitzer, publisher of The Source and co-host of this podcast. I am joined by Nicole Vulcan, our editor. We are powered by The Source Weekly, Ben's locally owned newspaper. Listeners tune in to find out how our community is dealing or not dealing with our ever evolving new normal. Today, we are speaking with Melissa Barnes Delacchia. Did I get that right, Melissa? Yes. And superintendent of the Ben Lepine School District, Steve Cook. Melissa Barnes Delacchia is a lifetime educator who has served as a teacher, principal, district administrator, and now consultant. She is currently the chair of the Ben Lepine Schools Board of Directors and the parent of two children who combined have attended Ben Lepine's elementary, middle, and high schools. Steve started his tenure as superintendent of Ben Lepine Schools in July after serving as the superintendent of schools in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. He was a classroom teacher for 12 years, teaching chemistry and physics, as well as teaching younger kids before moving into an administrative role. He told our sister publication, Ben Nest, earlier this year, they look forward to working in a district that fostered listening and communication and was inclusive of multiple viewpoints. Engaging communities in conversation is a passion of his, something he certainly got to do a lot of since joining Ben Lepine, where spirited conversation has been the name of the game this school year. We were very interested in having both of you on because of that very topic. It certainly has been a robust time for conversation. School districts across the nation have been the focus of a lot of politics and a lot of, I think, a lot of really relevant information, but also a lot of misinformation that's getting out there. So our desire to sit down and actually talk to you guys about what's happening in our own local school district. So thanks for taking the time. I'll start, I'll start with you. You've been on the school board for a couple of years now. Describe what those years are like and how they've changed recently.
Sure, Aaron. And so I ran for school board two and a half years ago and really did so because I saw our district and our community were both continuing to rapidly grow and change. And I felt like my experience could help with that. I ran on four principles, which were agency, equity, belonging, and then having strong financial and organizational practices. And I will say, I was privileged to be elected by 72% of our voters in a three person race. And so I have really worked to honor the principles that I ran on. And I would say in those early years, we've done a pretty great job as a board and as a district. I'm really proud of the work that we've done, from running our Equity and Excellence Review Process, where we deeply engaged with our community, 35 focus groups, 33 some site based groups, a parent, parent, family, and student survey, all of this to develop really our student investment account and strategic plan. The work that we've done in terms of developing new board goals and policies, the fact that we've opened two new schools for our community, North Star Elementary and Caldera High School, being at the forefront of getting our kids, I mean, wow, nobody expected this once in a lifetime pandemic to happen, but we were the first large district in Oregon to get our kids back in schools in person every day because we knew that's where they belong. And then really just living up to that promise with different mitigation strategy to make sure that we keep kids in schools and in our buildings. We haven't had to close a classroom or a school so far. That's pretty, pretty unique. And then not to, you know, make him blush, but we also managed to, through a distant process, hire an amazing superintendent for our district to really take our work forward. And so if you like those early years, we've, we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of work and really it's about continuing that work moving forward.
And so Melissa, maybe you could speak a little bit to what you've seen recently. I mean, like I mentioned, this district is no district from a lot of others across the country that are seeing intense interest, whether that's politically or pandemically related. What's it been like?
Yeah, you know, it, I would say that there are, there are great things and hard things. And what I continue to remind myself of is that you have to keep your head up and your head down. And so I think in this time period, what you need to do is really make sure that you keep your head up and you're really making sure to listen to constituents. There's a lot of people speaking. Now, we've always had great levels of interest in different topics that were on the school board agenda and pieces that were coming up, whether it was our sustainability plan, whether it was the naming of new facilities, et cetera. What we haven't, haven't had is kind of this more national dialogue in our, in our, in our board meetings. And we do now. And so now how do we kind of keep our head up and make sure that we're really listening to those voices? That's the impetus of creating these listening sessions. We're having one tonight on a quarterly basis. So that's a change. At the same time, there's the piece of keeping your head down and putting one foot in front of the other because there's the core work of the board and the core work of this district and what we're doing and making sure that we continue to advance that while listening and taking in feedback, but really making sure, sure that we're, you know, that we're moving, moving forward. I would say the pandemic, Aaron, is the number one piece. There are a lot of differing positions on, on masking, on vaccination, on, on, you know, pretty much any mitigation strategy available. And then at the end-
That brings up something that, you know, maybe some people don't know is that what are, for those not familiar, what are roles of the school board? What, what are your parameters that you have?
Absolutely. And I think Nicole, that's exactly where I was going because there's, there's pieces that aren't in our control. And if you're really looking at a school board, we have two, two jobs, two responsibilities. One is to supervise and oversee the work of our superintendent, Steve. And we do so by setting goals and being able to set policies. And second is approving the budget. And those are our two, those are our two vehicles that, that we use in terms of guiding this district.
And Steve, maybe you can chime in for this, on this next question because, you know, increasingly, we mentioned, we brought this up in our endorsement interviews before the election, when you could see this kind of like social media and playing a larger role and, and pressure on these political candidates and kind of the like. I mean, some dialogue's good, some dialogue's pretty toxic. And certainly the, the rhetoric around the kind of conversation that's happening at school, it's pretty high test stuff, especially if you're on the sidelines looking at. I mean, for a district that's in it and knows the answers to those things, I imagine it's not quite, doesn't quite appear as, as rough as it does from the outside. But I can say from like where I sit and having, you know, reported on news here for 25 years, I've never seen anything like it. What's been the toll or what are the coping strategies that you guys are using to make your way through this to greener pastures?
So I think, Nicole's question earlier and the, like, how do you just, how do you manage? Like, first of all, we're busy, we're really busy and we're, we're busy making sure that we are, are meeting the expectations. We've kind of got a lot of, lot of different forces that are, that are kind of convening on us that we have to live by and, and we're going to. And we're not going to break rules and we're not going to break laws. And, and in that regard, in some, in some cases, some of the outside stuff is just noise. We can't, we can't attend to what everybody wants us to do. One of the things that I try to do so that I, because I do honor engagement and I do want to make sure that people who care and are passionate about their schools have access points to be able to express their, their energy, whether it's in agreement or in disagreement. You know, I'm, I'm just because someone disagrees with, with me or with whatever path we're taking, doesn't mean we're not going to be willing to talk about it. Well, we're, I engage with anybody that wants to talk. And that being said, if people just want to yell and fuss, that's a, that's a different ballgame. And I think to some extent, there's just a lot of frustration right now because there's so much misinformation and there's so much out there that, that people who I think sometimes are looking at misinformation are, are saying to us, you're looking at misinformation. And I think that's just this kind of unique time because information is everywhere, it does create some challenges. And so for me, I don't, I don't know that I've seen this acuity of political activism that is, is kind of crescendoed through whether it's pandemic, whether it's just a political culture right now. But in 33 years, I've never had this many emails. I've never had this many people want to talk about a topic. And so for that, that's definitely something that, that I find is unprecedented for sure.
Sure. Melissa, do you want to speak a little bit to that? I mean, I think the thing that, I think the thing that's a little, little, let's just say rough is, you know, that it's not so much the volume, right? I mean, having an engaged community talking about these issues is terrific. There are a lot of, I think, people who feel strongly on both sides of the way kids should be instructed and the direction, but, but it's the rhetoric and some of it's the, the very personal stuff that board members are having to deal with when, you know, you're, you're volunteering. Could maybe speak a little to that?
Sure. I mean, I think I'll speak to both because I want to piggyback on what Steve said because I do think that misinformation is hard. And I think that I do want to say, like, like Steve said, we want to hear from people. And I regularly say, I will meet with anyone in front of the education center. Bring a camp chair or tell me that you need me to bring one for you, right? And that, and I meet there, we find a place that's in the sun, but that way we can meet unmasked, you know, outside, and I can really hear from people. And so we want it, we want to hear from people. At the same time, there's just so, with the misinformation piece, there's a lot of people and it's, it's, um, it's hard and sometimes it's sad because there are people that care very deeply about this community, that are very upset about things that aren't happening. And I'll just use a recent example with some constituents that were very upset because the flag was not being allowed in classrooms at Caldera High School and that the anthem wasn't going to be sung. Not true. Not true at all, but very upset. And you could tell from this person, they were very upset about this. And so there's just a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation in our community right now. And I think that that's something that we need to address. And then on a, you know, on a personal level, is it easy? No, of course not. You have to have a really strong backbone. I always say, you know, I, I thought as an educator, I was coming in as a, you know, as a school board member, I did not realize, quite honestly, the personal attacks or the attacks against, you know, fellow people that I work with and the toll, you know, kind of that that would, that would take. And, and at the same time, I've had to come and recognize and come to terms with the fact that that's true and guide my family not to ever read comments on certain news channels or even my own Facebook page so that we can continue to do the core work, which is making sure that this district can be the best it can be for students, families, and staff.
So Melissa, an apology is if I, if I start getting garbled here, I'll try my best. In a recent open letter, you talked about the letter about complaints that had come in filed against the board, against board members here. The public has not been able to be privy to those where, you know, of course, we're curious, what's in them? Can you give us any insight into what they entailed, what the processes for working through those complaints and what happens once a complaint is determined to be founded or invented?
Absolutely. So I have had the opportunity as vice chair last year and then chair this year to process those. And I would say that the most important thing we can do for our public is make sure that we're transparent and unbiased. And so I direct our, our legal counsel to hire an independent investigator every single time. I do not want to ever be in the position where it looks like we have been compromised in how we deal with any complaint. And so that's the process. Should a complaint ever have findings that, that suggested that a board member were in wrongdoing? Really, as a board, we, we only have two vehicles. We can either censure, which means we say, you know, kind of slap on the hand, you shouldn't have done that. Or we can remove somebody from a committee. We have very few committees on, in our, because we're a policy board, we have very few committees, but we could remove someone from committee leadership. But beyond that, those, you know, those are, those are the vehicles that we as a board have. There may be vehicles outside if something were egregious, but as a board, those are the two things that we have in our power.
And Steve, if I could add, if I could just, one of the things that we're presenting to the board in an upcoming meeting is a very well articulated process that we would build into policy as to what that complaint mechanism looks like. So it's very clearly communicated with our community and, and we'll present that to the board at the next board meeting. And that'll go out for public comment and feedback so that folks have the ability to opine on they believe we've captured the intention of the, the process so that we are doing, doing that kind of investigation in a thorough and unbiased manner. And so that's, look for that at our next board meeting.
Great. Well, both of you have spent your career in education and I'm, I'm just curious what your experience or knowledge level around what was being called critical race theory before this recent outcry over it's allegedly being taught in K through 12 schools? And how do you respond to allegations that it's, that it is a formal push into the system? And Steve, why don't you start with that one?
Sure. Thanks, Aaron. I just, let me start by saying, I'm not sure of any school district in the country that's teaching critical race theory to K through 12 students. Typically exists in law schools and it's an approach to talk about when you have systemic racism and you have systems of racial inequity in, in large context and try to figure out if there's something there that you can measure. And so critical race theory, as far as a construct, is a relatively new construct. And so as, as a point of my experience in 33 years, doing this work and doing equity work for 33 years, I hadn't heard the term critical race theory in relationship to K-12 education ever once and until maybe the last, maybe 12 to 15 months. And so I would just say for the record, Aaron, that it's not, it's not a part of anything I've ever experienced. Now that being said, I unabashedly am going to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion work and have done so in this district and did it in previous districts. And I would tell you that there's, that it might be that that statement about critical race theory being more of a kind of almost a call to action or a bell whistle for certain people with, have, have certain values that, that is, they're looking to make claims that students and maybe family members are, should be paying attention because people are being potentially shamed. That's not happening in our schools. And I think that's the part of the work that I would want to emphasize is that the work we're doing with regards to equity and inclusion and the emphasis on trying to serve our historically marginalized and underserved students more effectively is, is how are we facing those problems and solving them? And how are we meeting those students' needs so that they're getting all they can aspire to get, their potential can be achieved and the access to the education they deserve is theirs for the taking in our school system?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the piece that I would add is very, very, everything Steve just said. And I would say just on that, I'm looking at how we make sure that every child has an equally excellent experience and outcomes in our district. It's really about looking and making sure that every kid can see themselves in our schools and in our curriculum, that they are known well, that they experience belonging and that they receive the tailored supports that they need to be able to go on to have a passion, a purpose, and a plan for their future.
Yeah, well, we were talking about misinformation and I think, you know, just my own personal experience and looking at the, at the vast amount of misinformation that comes out around critical race theory is probably a large part of the problem. I mean, just looking at that, at the Virginia governor's race and the way that was used as a cudgel in that, in that race and seeing it spread to a lot of the comments with, without a lot of opportunity to really talk about, I think, what you guys have pointed out has this like basic tenets of decency towards how we want people to come up through the system equally respected. So that has been a, that has been a very confusing part for me as I watch this thing because obviously I'm not sitting there in a place where I can really converse with these folks, but, but you are. And, and I can say it looks from the outside like there's just a lot of stuff that needs to be clarified. And I don't, I mean, school board, I mean, God bless you guys for trying to explain it there, but it doesn't seem like the best vehicle for those kinds of discussions. I mean, where, where can these discussions happen? I mean, how do we get to a place where there is forum for this kind of stuff? Steve, maybe you?
Yeah, Aaron, I think that the, the, the question isn't about the topic as much as it is about whether or not people are willing to come to the table and have a conversation about it. And I, you know, I don't think anybody's going to argue with me as the superintendent when I say, we are going to meet students at their point of need. And if I start at that place, every kid's needs are their own and their unique needs are theirs. And we are going to address those to the extent that we have the capacity and will deliver upon those. And that is where we start. And so the, the premise of that statement means that we don't serve every kid the exact same, which then translates into a conversation, well, what, what, if somebody wants somebody to be treated the same, that does, that's, that's an argument that has never worked in public education because we, we meet kids at their needs. And so you, that conversation gets really challenging when the premise starts with, no, every kid should get an equal shot and every kid should be treated the same. Never done that. And so that's the part that I think is the, the struggle for us is that we're not starting at a common understanding. And so I've had this conversation with people and when they're open to the, the conversation from that lens, you can actually make some headway. But when they're, when, when the, when the, the predication is that there, if you say anything about equity, that means you're taking away from my kid to give to another, that's a misnomer and that's not how it's delivered ever.
Yeah, Melissa, do you, going back to these kinds of conversations, I mean, several times in this podcast right now, you've talked about an open door, people coming and sitting down with you now. How many of those discussions are you having? How many people are taking you up on that?
Um, you know, it's a mix, Aaron. And what I will say is I offer, I've probably offered over 100. I think in my statement that I made at that time, seven people had taken me up on it. I think I have an eighth. And this is from people who are adamant against a lot of what we, what the, what is happening in our public schools. I think there's a whole other group of people that, that have taken me up as well. And, and you know, I got a great question, I think actually from another media outlet who said, you know, are those helpful?
Yeah.
Said yes. Like every time I meet with someone, whether we are, whether we leave, like we, we hopefully leave shaking hands, right? Or elbow bumping or foot, foot bumping in, in this day and age. But hopefully we leave with that decency, with that respect, but having had a conversation. But I walk away every time having learned something and it does impact me and it impacts how I think about policy. And I'll use the example of outdoor masking. Last spring, I had several conversations with people about outdoor masking. And, and we had information from the CDC and I pushed at the state level, pushed at the local level, and we removed it out on our playgrounds for our kids at the time, under what we could do at that point in time, right? But, but that, that came about from conversations, right? And so I do, I learn every time that I speak with someone. And so I just, you know, my, my camp chair is always open to, to meet with more people and I hope they take me up on that.
Right.
This one, this one's for either of you. I'm curious about enrollment in this year of we, you know, ongoing pandemic concerns. Now we have some other concerns that seem to be causing parents to perhaps take their children out of school. What have you seen in terms of enrollment this year for Ben Lepine Schools? And are you concerned about a decrease in enrollment?
All right, so let me take this one on. So, so yes, that we have seen a, a small decrease, well, percentage wise, a decrease in enrollment and, and it was expected to some extent. I think there's, in some regards, people can vote with their feet, especially when they have other options. And I think in this regard, some did. And so we're funded by, by essentially average daily membership. And so, so we built a budget based upon a certain number. And then I think we were about 500 less than, than, 500 less students than that projected number. And we'll make adjustments as the year goes with that. And so the question on whether or not, you know, 500 out of about 18,500 students roughly were unaccounted for. And I think the, the word on the street that we're hearing is that when some of these things change, many of those kids will come back and things like masking and whether or not kids are going to be required to wear masks in our schools matters to the extent to some families, to, to the level that they're willing to say, my kid's not going to go to that school if they have to wear a mask. And, and we're going to, like, that's a choice, right? Like, we don't, it's compulsory education if you're enrolled, but if not, if you're not enrolled, right?
And I would say on the flip side also, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would say that there are also families that have been waiting for the five, five to 11 vaccine to come out. And whatever their individual family circumstances, they are not comfortable sending their kids in school in person until more people are vaccinated in our community. And so I do think that that drop in enrollment can come from multiple sides of this equation in, in terms of the pandemic.
And Melissa is exactly right. And I totally forgot about the fact that we've had a substantial increase in enrollment in our online school as well. We're doing our best to try to provide those choices and options. And, and when you serve a community, you've got people who want certain things and you've got people who want other things. And so we're trying to meet the needs of the most we can. And we've seen by providing those services and that online option, we've actually had quite a few people take us up on that.
Yeah, I had a conversation with some of the folks from the Latino Community Association this week and they had mentioned some concern in their community around engagement of students who may have slipped through the cracks during the pandemic, maybe went to work and didn't return to school. What's going on with all of that on your end for either of you?
Tell me more what you mean, Nicole.
Just say re-engaging students who may be older students who maybe decided not to return to school whatsoever. And, you know, you don't maybe know where they are or if they're coming back to school. I guess I'm kind of curious, and I think our readers might be too. What is the process of trying to get a student like that back into school?
So I, um, let's talk a little bit about the safety nets first. Like, there are a lot of systems in place to make sure that students are accounted for. And I think some of our students are availing themselves of all of the resources we have, like our fan network, which is helping students get access to kind of their basic needs. You know, sometimes it might be vouchers for food or it might be resources for school or it might even be any bully bills. We've got families that can access those in every one of our schools and that we provide that support across the region. All of Central Oregon has that access. And so, and then the other one is just the networking that we have with, for Kinley Vento, we have people that can support homeless students, students who are experiencing temporary houselessness or whatever those circumstances are. By following up on each of those students as we are aware of them, we can chase those leads down. And so it's rare that a kid just disappears and we don't have some kind of knowledge about what those circumstances and conditions might be. But I suppose in the rare case that, that someone doesn't know that somebody didn't enroll, like perhaps over the summer, and we don't get transfer paperwork on those. But those are very few and far between. The, the students that are choosing to make those decisions are typically are going to communicate with us. Students that choose to drop out actually fill out paperwork that notify us of those things. And we haven't had so far a substantial increase in that at this point, but just disappearing is rare.
Yeah. And I would say our success coordinators at every one of our high schools also play a huge role in knowing every child well and being able to follow those so that kids don't follow, fall through the track, fall through the cracks, excuse me, and stay on track.
Interesting that, the conversations that, you know, this might be an example of something I heard about, maybe, you know, the facts aren't all, all there when I hear it, you know, want to know what that's really about.
Sure. If you've got names, if you've got anybody that you can give, we're always glad to go look for kids.
Well, I got a, I got an 18 year old. I don't know where she is right now. Can you find her? Can you find her, Mr. Cook?
Nicole, I will say in our last board meeting, that was one of the pieces we did talk, it wasn't about the older kids, but it was about the younger kids. And during the pandemic and the disproportionate impact that the pandemic and learning at home had on littler kids. And one of the things that we really did actually talk about and drill into is when we're looking at our children who are dual language learners or second language learners, the impact that it has, that the pandemic has had, if when you're at home learning, you're basically in linguistic isolation from the English language. And so we, we really looked at that, we drilled into that. And our, our team is fast tracking a lot of work in terms of really looking at the gap that has occurred for those students and how we actively remedy that through different curriculums, fast tracking our curriculum adoption. We held summer school last summer. We will hold it for the next two summers. And so just really looking at, to what Steve was saying early, earlier, equal isn't equitable. Who are the kids that were most impacted by the, by the pandemic? And absolutely, language learners are one of those groups. And then how do we provide differentiated programs to address the needs of those children?
Um, so I wanted to, and this is more of a 30,000 foot kind of question, but you know, as we do see more of this friction in the community between what the school board can offer and what people want from their school board and the, you know, the push and pull between, you know, I want them to be masked. I don't want them to be masked. I, you know, I don't want this taught. I want this taught. And do you, and it, and I, and I think Steve mentioned it, it's, it certainly is increasing this feeling like, you know, is, it's not my school district unless they're teaching exactly what I want them to teach as a parent. Where does this lead? You know, it just seems like as, as this is increasing and people are, are getting into deeper and deeper encampments. What does that mean for a school district moving forward to try to like integrate this? It doesn't seem, we're not in a political season right now. I mean, I know we're always, you know, building up to the next election, but I figured things would be a little calmer right now. They don't. Any of you guys want to take that one?
I mean, I can take it from a board perspective, which is that we have elections in our community and we have elections for a reason. And people come out and they let you know what their vision would be. And then whoever is elected has the responsibility to uphold what they said they were going to do. And so no election is ever going to model what every single person in the community would like. However, we can model being respectful. We can model decency. We can model continuing to find when there are places for a middle ground, finding them. I feel like actually before local control came, was, or excuse me, before local control was taken away. I thought that we actually had an excellent model that really was not going to necessarily make anybody happy, but it was a solid, like a solid approach, which was that once kids and families have an opportunity to be vaccinated, we, we would remove masking. So we would remove it for 12 and up. And then within 60 to 90 days, we will remove it for our five through 12s. I think that that's, you know, there are people who would want masking to continue indefinitely. And there are people who want masking gone, you know, two years ago. We've been able to listen, right? And come up with solutions that I think are, are right for our community. But that's, that's ultimately what you need to do. And you're not, you're just, you're not gonna make everybody happy in your decisions.
I was hoping you were going to say we were going to make everybody happy. And then this was, this was going to settle down. Steve, any thoughts?
Aaron, I feel like I can talk to that specifically. So let me start by, by, Melissa kind of touched on the masking. Let me talk a little bit about probably the, the category I hear the most about outside of operational things due to COVID. And that is curricula. And, and I'll just say from the lens of a superintendent, I heard this many years ago from a, who's now retired superintendent, longtime superintendent, he, he told me quite specifically that if you're doing your job well, Steve, as a superintendent, probably just about everybody's just a little mad at you. Because you, you spend most of your time negotiating in some fashion or another. And then you
That sounds like journalists.
Yeah, exactly. You, you back up against your own values. And there, there comes a point in time when your values either are aligned with your boards or they're so out of alignment that you've got to make a decision, you know, is this where I want to be? And so that's part of why this work is so challenging right now is because value conversations are happening all over the place. And right now we've get, we're getting tremendous push about what we're teaching. And, and when it comes to the curricula conversation of any kind, there's really kind of three points that you have to take into consideration. Number one, curriculum is pretty standardized across the state. It's pretty, pretty easy to point to and say, this is what we're going to teach right here. This is what we're expected to teach. And so parents have a right to kind of look that through and say, okay, I understand that. Secondly, we give guidance to teachers where there are things that might be challenging. You're going to wind up with the idea of, okay, we're getting ready to talk about a topic that maybe not everybody's ready to talk about. And so one of the things we promoted early on, when I first got here was revising a policy that we called controversial issues, that is just guidance for how teachers should approach those conversations. Be very transparent with families and say, look, we're getting ready to take this on. If you don't want to dive into this with us, here's what we can do and here's what your kid can do instead. But we're not going to not teach it because your kid's uncomfortable with it. If you want to be excluded from it, that's your choice. And I think the third piece is just simply, parents have rights that they can exercise if they're like, this is just way too out of my comfort zone. I, that's why other schools exist. That's what private schools are a place. But honestly, I'll tell you, and I've been doing this a long time. Public education might be the single most successful public service that we have in this democracy. And, and we do a pretty darn good job of living to serve most all people in this. And I'm, I've done it in four states and I'm very proud of what public education does for communities, especially where engagement is high. And so you know, we, we may not always agree on what gets taught, but we are going to provide you options if you're not satisfied.
Thanks so much. So we want to wrap up, start wrapping up, but we want to give you both an opportunity to just say anything that, you know, about your role in, in schools that the public might not know, that you'd like them to understand. And obviously I'll give each of you an opportunity to talk about that before we, we head out.
Melissa, you want to start?
Um, I think, sure. I would say that I joked around, I joke around frequently. People say, why did, whoa, you ran for school board. It's like new superintendent, global pandemic, et cetera. And I, I joke that my timing could not have been more impeccable on that front. But what I actually believe is that that's true. I feel like I'm the right person at this right point in time. It doesn't make it easy. It, it is, these are different challenges than I thought I was going to be taking on as a school board member, as the vice chair and now the chair. And, and I continue to do so because I really believe in this community. I believe in Central Oregon. I believe that we are going through a lot of growing pains. I have watched this community since 1992, when I applied to teach at Bend High to now. This community was 18,000 and it's 100,000 now. It's, it's, you know, change is not easy. Transition is not easy. So do we have unique times in terms of what's happening with school boards? Absolutely. But this is change that, that we're continuing to tackle. And Ben Lepine, and I really believe that if we continue to be able to have conversations with one another to, I was an elementary school principal, treat each other how we would expect any kindergartner in our schools, to be able to treat each other. And I believe we can get there.
Steve? Sure. I, I, I just would add a couple of things. First of all, I've been doing this work for 33 years, as I've said a couple of times now. Probably kind of a little reform minded innovation is matters to me. Good teaching and learning in classrooms is, is what I stand for and promote. And have been pushing on that for a long time. I would tell you that that's sped up over the last two years. And there's probably more good things that will come out of this pandemic when it's all said and done than bad things. And, and it's been important to note that. And I, I would also kind of draw attention to the fact that it's not the schools that we went to as adults that we went to 25, 30 years ago. These are schools, these are, are, are schools and kids are kinder. Kids are more attentive to one another's needs. They're, they're relational. There's less bullying going on nowadays. I'm not saying everything's perfect. Don't, don't take that from this. But I will guarantee you that schools are providing a more thorough service now and they will continue to do that. And anybody that wants to, to take me up on the offer to, I'll take you around and I'll take you in the classrooms. Anywhere you want to go in our district and I'll point out places where things are changing. And it's a great place for kids to, to learn. And we have the most incredibly dedicated staff who are just talk about putting their heads down. They're just powering through, delivering services to kids with unrelenting commitment to success. And that is what I see every day in our district. And that's the argument I want to have with people is just how they're killing it, how they're knocking it out of the park. And that if they are willing to join me, I'll take them on a little walk in any of the classrooms in our district and, and see for themselves. Don't take my word for it. Let's go. We'll take, we'll take a walk.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any other questions. I, I'm not sure. I think Aaron, Aaron is, has, has wrapped up his questions as well. So we just want to thank you for spending some time with us, clearing up some maybe misconceptions about, about your roles in the community. And just thanks for your service.
Thank you for your time and thank you to your listeners for taking the time to actually hear about this work.
Thanks for having us on.
Yeah, thanks both of you. I, I didn't manage to squeeze in and this seemed like the right place for my 30 minute speech on why I dislike social media so much, but I'll push that off on another couple of guests. Well, thanks guys. This, this has been the Ben Don't Break Podcast. We appreciate everybody listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.